So we'll call to order this the Monday, October 12th, 2020 meeting of the Ellisville Town Council being held on Zoom. Sandy, um, do you want to do the pledge?
Well, Mike Corman is there with the flag, so we'll let Mike.
Is he? I'm sorry, again, I can't see him, so whoever's there wants to do it.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands
I'm going to testify. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Marshall, are you there for the prayer?
I am, sir. By having the Father, we take this time to thank you so much for the many blessings. We thank you for the wonderful atmosphere we have to work in. We just ask you to attend it to bless this little town in a way we see fit. Leading guide these council members tonight to make the proper decisions for the proper weight of rest to come. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Sandy, roll call, please.
Dan Swafford. Scott Oldham.
Here.
William Ellis.
Here.
Trevor Sager.
Here.
Pamela Samples.
Okay, move on to approval of the minutes for the regular meeting on September 28th, 2020.
So moved.
I'll second.
Sandy, if you would, roll call, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is actions to pay accounts payable vouchers and the payroll.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
And Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next is ordinance on first reading, which is ordinance 2020-25 to amend ordinance 2020-20, the Burns annexation to correct legal description.
The purpose of this ordinance is to correct the legal description. When 2020-20 was originally passed, um, I had an error in the legal description. As you can see, I put the original description that was put in 2020-20, and at some point I said north instead of south. And so the purpose of this is just to correct that so that the auditor's office has an accurate description of the property that was annexed. And because you've already passed this, you can go ahead and use the procedure that the Indiana Code authorizes to pass an ordinance on first reading if you would like.
And I sent that to you by email today for a guideline if you can, if you receive that.
Is there any council comments on this second go around of this?
No, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Um, if you would, please.
I will make a motion to approve ordinance 20, ah, now I've got to find the ordinance again. 2020-25 to amend ordinance 2020-20, Burns annexation, correcting legal description.
You have to move that it be submitted for first reading.
That, that, that I moved that it be submitted for first reading.
All right.
And I'll second that. One of us will.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Okay, Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And I might note for, I might note for the public that we're not taking public comment on this is because this is correcting an error of something that we have already, um, approved.
Now we need a second motion moving that ordinance number 2020-25 be adopted on the same day at which it is introduced.
Do you want me to box that one, too?
Sure.
All right. I moved that ordinance 20, uh, 2025-20 be adopted the same day at which it's introduced.
Second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are no ordinances.
I'm sorry, the final motion is that ordinance number 2020-25 be adopted.
I'll move that ordinance number 2020, 20, 25-20 be adopted.
It's 2020-25.
Sorry, 2020-25 be adopted. Thank you.
I'll second.
Sandy, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, thank you all. There are no ordinances on second reading under old business is the animal shelter interlocal for fiscal year 2021.
I did have a conversation with, um, the animal shelter, Mr. Director, Mr. Souter, and I believe I sent you all an email about it, and he gave me some figures with regard to what the animal shelter does in fact charge out of town residents. And, um, he also sent me some statistics showing what the animal shelter has collected from the out of county residents. And I believe it was about forty-five hundred bucks. So, um, I know all of that is not listed on the figures that the city or the county provides to you, but they are charging, um, when folks who live out of county drop their animals off at the shelter.
Okay. All right. Are there any council questions concerning this? Any public questions concerning this? And then Sandy or Darla, if you'll help me out, um, are we doing anything with this more tonight, or is this just a report on this?
Um, it, I don't believe the council passed it last time because I had asked some que, I'm the one who asked the questions about was, was the animal shelter charging for out of county residents? And, uh, the council tabled it so I could get some information about that. So yes, i- if you're inclined to pass it, it should, there should be a vote tonight.
I guess the question is for the council, are you prepared to move forward, or do you want some more time to study?
I'm ready to move, Scott. I don't know about William.
I am, too.
All right. Real quick, Amber, were there any public comments? I'm sorry.
I don't see any right now.
Okay, then back to the council for action if there's a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the animal shelter interlocal agreement for fiscal 2021. Sandy, if you would, please.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
The flood report, flood mitigation plan for Vine Street.
Uh, that would be Michael Farmer.
Hmm, and Michael Farmer is on.
Okay, um, well, uh, we have now purchased and uh, own 104 West Vine Street. That adds to the, uh, purchase a year or so ago for, of 105 West Vine Street. And, uh, we also are, I, I have been talking to G L Chandler about including his property that uh, makes a pretty good swath of property along the, uh, creek banks of the Jackseet. And, uh, we have a proposal from Christopher Burke to do a flood plan, um, for mitigation. And, um, this would be improvements that would mitigate some of the flooding, uh, in downtown Ellisville. So, uh, last time I talked about this, uh, we were talking about how to go about financing this. And in the storm utility, there's a hundred and forty-two thousand nine hundred and four dollars of unused funds. And I would recommend that we take some of those funds and, um, pay to have the flood plan developed by Christopher Burke. Um, the estimated fee, um, it's probably been almost a year ago or more when, uh, the estimated fee was, uh, developed by Andrew Miller, who works for Christopher Burke. And he estimated it'd be fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, because we're going to add some other property, we're probably going to be looking at some, uh, additional fees for data gathering, surveying and such. And so, uh, when I talked to him, he thought it would be a few thousand dollars more, but since we really hadn't got to this point yet, uh, I, I can't give you an exact estimate of how much that is. But, uh, I, I need, we need to de, uh, decide whether we're going to move forward and at some point get a vote to, um, uh, Alyssa, uh, to, um, to get Christopher Burke to do the flood plan for us. So that's, that's what I'm asking for tonight to, to be able to move forward.
Okay. William, are you back on?
I'm here, just my video.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
I don't want to reboot because if you lose me, then we don't have a quorum.
That's what I was just saying. We, I just want to make sure you're there for the quorum.
I'm going to be audio only until I can figure out the video issue.
Okay.
Is that going to be okay? Darla, you know?
It's okay.
Okay, I just want to make sure it still constitutes a quorum.
As long as you're still participating.
Oh, absolutely. Yes, it just, yeah.
Okay, Mike, if you can help me out again, what exactly are you asking for tonight? Just permission to move forward and get estimates on how much it's going to cost totally? Or can you clarify that a little bit?
No, uh, well, I, I don't know, Darla has, I mean, we have a estimated fee. And, um, that's in the proposal, that's what it says, and it's fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. Um, because we'll be adding additional work, uh, to this project moving forward. Uh, and I, I'm relatively sure that's true, uh, then it may be more than fifty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. But what I'd like to get is approval from the board to, uh, start the process. So how do we do that?
Um, we need to have a contract from Christopher Burke that we can put on the agenda for the next council meeting so the council can approve it. So if you want to go ahead and contact them and ask them to put together, um, a proposal and a contract, that would be fine, or I can do it, whatever.
I'll, I'll just send it to you tomorrow. I have one now. Well, I, I, I've had one from the past and, and he said it's still, uh, valid. So, uh, I think everyone has seen this in the past, and I'm sure nobody remembers it now. So, um, that's fine. I mean, I'll, I'll send it to you. You can look at it and recommend to the, uh, the board. And we'll just put it on the next, um, next meeting agenda and you can vote on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Any council questions concerning this? Any public questions concerning this?
I've got one.
Okay, Russ, go ahead.
Yes, the, uh, plan, uh, this company is going to produce for us, how all-inclusive is this? Uh, does this cover the entire Creek Basin or just an area of it?
Well, it, it covers an area of it, and it is pretty inclusive. It, the, uh, phase one, uh, uh, details wetland delineation and site surveys, geotechnical investigation, utility coordination. Phase two is the design. They will implement the hydraulic modeling, modeling they had already done to, uh, get to this point. And then there'll be design drawings and, uh, technical, uh, specification, engineers, estimates, things like that, agency coordination. Because they'll be working with IDAM, DNR, and, uh, a couple other, um, uh, government organizations. And then, um, also included in his, the, um, design is meetings with staff and, um, board members, whoever wants to be in. And then the phase three is the permitting. And they go through several, um, permit applications and, and then, uh, they have to get a construction and a floodway permit application. And, uh, in the, uh, in the proposal, it, uh, mentions excluded services, estimated fees. And so it's pretty, um, it, it, it has everything we would want to start a project.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that this was going to cover everything we need to go to, uh, being shovel-ready.
Yes, that's, that's, that's what my proposal is, is to take this, um, um, proposal of with the scope of services, uh, considered, uh, and, uh, hire Christopher Burke to put us in a position where we actually can start work.
Okay. Thank you.
Amber, is there anyone else?
It doesn't look like it right now.
Okay. So if there was no contract up announced this evening, uh, we'll move forward if no one has objections to new business. So under new business is memorandum of understanding between the County of Monroe, Indiana and the Town of Ellisville, Indiana concerning the resurfacing of Ratliff Road.
Yes, that would be me, Dan. Uh, Monroe County is wanting to apply for a grant to resurface Ratliff Road. And about point two-six of that belongs to the town. And they're asking that we will just let them go ahead and, and resurface it right through our section.
Sounds like a good plan to me.
That sounds really good. Sounds good to me. I mean, it'd be nothing that people don't.
Counsel questions on this?
Seems like a no-brainer to me as well.
Just wanted to say thank you for the counting for being willing to do this.
Absolutely.
Scott, Lisa Ridge is on our meeting if you have any questions for her.
Um, Lisa, again, I can't see you, but if you want to make comment, please do.
So, um, actually, yeah, we are putting this into the community crossings grant application for their, um, September round, um, actually October, sorry. Um, so we wanted to do Ratliff Road actually from Loudoun Road to Hart Street. We just did a great project, I think a joint effort project for Hart Street with the town of Ellisville doing their portion, and then the county doing a portion of theirs all the way to Vernal Pike. So, um, Ratliff what road is, uh, in dire need of paving, so we chose that road. We did a memorandum of understanding with the City of Bloomington a couple of years ago, um, when we crossed, uh, government jurisdictions. So we didn't want to leave out a, a little quarter of a mile piece of Ratliff Road. Um, we plan on addressing drainage issues and everything if we're awarded the project, um, before we even go in to pave it. Put in pipes where it's needed. Um, so yeah, um, we'd, we'd appreciate you guys supporting this. I, I couldn't understand why you wouldn't want to, so. Um, yeah, it'd be a great project.
Great. Thank you, Lisa. Any council comments at all? Okay, and to the council for motions.
All right, I'm calling it up here. I move that we approve the paving of Ratliff Road, correct, for the community crossings grant?
The memorandum of understanding between the county and Town of Ellisville, is that what you're moving?
Yes.
Okay. And I'll second that. So with the motion in a second, Sandy, if you would.
Scott Oldham.
Yes.
William Ellis.
Yes.
Trevor Sager.
Yes.
Motion carries.
New utility maintenance building.
Okay, that's, that's me again, Michael Farmer. Uh, so, uh, I've said in the past that, uh, the utilities department would like to move out of their maintenance building they currently are at on Matthews Drive, basically right next to the recycle center. Um, I wish I could tell you how old that building is, but I'll just say that it's a fairly old building. Uh, the foundation's rotting out from under it. We've been flooded at least a half a dozen times, uh, to the point where we had to move all our equipment out. Uh, when I first started working there, they showed me where my office would be, and there was mud in the desk drawers. So not to elaborate, elaborate anymore, we need to move. And, um, we would like to, uh, take advantage of the, uh, twenty acres that we now own um, as a utility, really owned by the Town of Ellisville, but as a utility, we have twenty acres available of the fifty acres where the town hall now sits. So, um, the plan would be to build a maintenance facility, modern maintenance facility. And at some point in our future, uh, perhaps even erect a water tank on the same site. And, um, so, um, I, I don't know where we start, the, I, 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 I mean, you know, we, we need to start the process of, uh, having Darla work with us. Um, ask for some, uh, plans to be, uh, developed. It'll cost money. I, I, I don't know if I should have to, I mean, I don't know if I'm expected to tell you how much the plans will start. I, I guess I can get estimates for that next. But, uh, one of my problems with all this is, I, before we can figure out how much we're going to spend, we need to know exactly where we're going to put it. So for tonight's meeting, what I'd really like to talk about is, um, the placement of the utility building. We, we, we have some preliminary drawings and we think we know where it should go. But we met up there today and, uh, Jeff, uh, Farmer, Rick Kopic, uh, Brian Miller and Tom Corman. Uh, we all met up there and looked at, uh, the site. And the more we talked about it, the more different views, uh, came about. And it was clear that, you know, there were certain, uh, ideas that were based on how much a building would cost, how much we could save by moving the building to option A or option B. Um, how many trees we would have to cut down, um, was a consideration as well. And so it was clear to me after the meeting that the most important thing we should do right now is to decide exactly where we want aesthetics. Do we want a building where you can see it and it's prominent, uh, behind the town hall, or do we want to tuck it away, uh, around the corner in the woods? I mean, we have options. And so, um, what I'm saying to the board is I need direction. I think the board should be directly involved in how we place this. And I think there should be a more, uh, uh, elaborate, uh, conversation about what we see for the future of the rest of the property. Uh, the next item on our agenda is tree harvest. And one of the, uh, things that we, when we originally thought we was going to build the building in a, a certain place, we knew we was going to have to do some clear cutting. So, um, we considered doing a tree harvest and actually had somebody go in and mark trees that could be harvest. And, uh, and, and along with the clear cutting that we needed to do. So that's one of the items that came up when we decided, well, maybe we don't want to put the building in the woods. So, um, I, I guess my question to you is, um, is, is the board in favor of getting directly involved instead of us coming to you with, um, a couple of suggestions? Uh, I think maybe we ought to do a work session, or each board member should come up and we can take them through, through the properties. Um, and, 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 and decide what to do. And, and then at, at that point, we may even want some public participation in how we develop the property because, you know, we're looking at a park, we're looking at trails on there. Baseball fields have come up, so i- i- it's, it's kind of wide open what to do. And, and the more we looked into it, the more I realized we need your input. So that was kind of long-winded, but, um, I need, I need some discussion on it. If not now, soon.
Well, I mean, at least from my part, I think, yeah, I think the council should be intermingled with this because this property is the centerpiece of the town, or one of the centerpieces of the town that we've been developing for the last ten years. And this is kind of a furtherance of that, along with, as you mentioned, baseball fields and trails and everything else. So not only do I think the council needs to be involved, I would really like to see the public become involved because again, this is a fifty or sixty-year fixture. This is not a five or ten-year temporary structure.
I would agree.
Exactly.
And I would, you know, I'd like to see, you gave a couple of different options. And I'm not talking about necessarily drafting them up and paying someone, just kind of some back of the napkin ideas on what you're looking at, where, uh, it, on the property. I would lean towards it should be out of the way, so the town hall and the police department are front and center. But I'm not sold on that. I mean, I'd need to hear, like to hear from the public, but, but I appreciate you getting us involved with this.
Well, with that said, I don't think we tried it out of the way where we're embarrassed of it either. I think we need to build a structure that i- is a decent-looking structure for these employees to work in. It's not just a garage.
Well, absolutely. That is true.
Mike, don't we have some space to the northeast of the town hall that we could utilize there?
Oh, we do have the space, and we do have some options. We have drawings of what the building footprint would look like. And, and so we do have those options. And, and, and so, I, I mean, it's time for the, you know, it's time to move to the point where we're going to do this, this, or this. And, and we even have estimates of how much the building's going to cost. And so, uh, but for right now, I think after today, uh, we thought we kind of knew, when we went up there, we thought we kind of knew what, you know, where we wanted to do it. And I'd sent you an email about the tree harvest and how, uh, concerned I was about cutting trees. And yet it might be the good idea, and, and we've really backed off on that now. And so, I mean, it just, you know, after today and, and, and we had a diverse, um, list of ideas of what we should do. And I'm thinking that's what we're going to get out of the board, which is good. And, and so we're ready. We can answer your questions, show you some designs. Uh, we have footprints of the whole property and then how the placement of the building would look on it.
Hey, Mike.
So that's where we're at.
Mike, what, could we do a in-person work session where we almost walk the property with you?
Yes, we need to do that.
I think that'd be good.
I think you're, I think you're going to be amazed of how nice a piece of property we own. There, there's, uh, eighty-year-old trees in there, if not a hundred-year-old trees. Some of them are magnificent. Um, I mean, for harvesting, they would be excellent as well. But I think, um, uh, you know, my brother pointed out today, Jeff, he pointed out that if, if we're truly going to make trails and a park area out of it, then the idea of, you know, the ideas that we have for the woods themselves are as important as building the building. So we, we, we just need to get a, get an idea because, well, here's for instance. When I had not thought to put the building on some of the property that does not have any trees on it. But now that seems to be a, a, an option we might want to think about to preserve the woods and allow it to become a park area. So that's why we need to do it in person. And I suspect it'd take a couple hours to do at least. And, you know, that's, and that's why it's on the agenda.
Okay. Well, Mike, I think, and again, William, don't let me speak for you, but I think most of us would be in favor of a work session for kind of looking at the pros and cons of everything you guys have thought up.
I would.
So do you want to work with Sandy and see if we can come up with a date for the council to have a work session?
We will do that, and I might look at the weather as well.
Mike, how soon are you wanting to move on this?
Soon. I'm ready to start now.
Okay, the soo, the sooner we get the work session booked, the, the better for me. This, this time of year, everything fills up like right away.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So Sandy, if you wouldn't mind working on that, we'll go from there.
Well, you know, when we did the annual meeting postings, we, uh, posted a work session ev, on the third and fourth Mondays of the month. So, um, we could, you know, just pick up one of those Mondays.
It'd be October nineteenth, be next week.
If you'd be ready by then, Mike, I'd be good with it.
I'm good on nineteen, too.
Let's check with the other two council members just to be sure.
Yeah.
I, I'd be ready to do it, too. Right now they forecast rain, but, um, it would be, you know, that, that comes and goes. So, so we ought to just try, let's just, you want to go for Monday? Next Monday?
Let's do Monday.
Let's see what the other council members have got, because I know that one's got something going on right now. They may not be available. So I don't want to cut just both of those two out.
I'll have Sandy send something out and everybody can respond.
Perfect. And then while we're on that same topic, when we started developing town hall, at one point we had included the post office in talks about possibly relocating up. at one point we had included the post office in talks about possibly relocating up to the government complex. Have we reached out to them again now?
We haven't, but that should be part of the discussion. And, and, and it has, you know, some of those properties or some of those lots, if you will, that surround the town hall are perfect for ideas like that. And, and so when we build our building, I don't want it to cause us not to be, do, do something in the future. And I, I, you know, it's one of the big items on, on having a work session is proper placement of the maintenance building. So things like that can move forward and we should talk about that as well.
Can we maybe contact them and see if they're at all interested? And if so, maybe they could have somebody show up at the work session?
I can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Do we need to do tree harvest that's next thing under the new business or do you want to hold on that?
We, no, I definitely want to hold on that.
Okay. So with council's permission and to explain to the public, since we're going to have a work session totally dedicated to the new utility maintenance building and tree harvest, we'll move on now to Charleston Manor Phase One Erosion Control Bond, the release bond.
Do we need to make a motion to move on that tree harvest?
Um, Darla, okay. You don't need to do anything with either tree harvest or new utility building. I think it was just placed on the agenda for general discussion, so.
So I assume this is Kevin for Charleston Manor?
Yes. Good evening. Simply what Charleston Manor is asking for is they have an erosion control bond for a little over $31,000 for the first phase. They have finished all their preliminary work and I think they have most of the lots sold and have started to work on most of them. And everything that was on that erosion control bond has been completed. And they want to roll, you know, have that released and put that towards phase two.
Okay. So everything has been completed as part of that erosion control bond?
Yes.
Okay. Council questions? Public questions or comments? Amber?
There are none.
And back to the council for action and or comments.
I'll move to release the Charleston Manor Phase One Erosion Control Bond.
I'll second.
Motion is second. Sandy, please.
God Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next is a truck purchase for the fire department. Chief?
Good evening. According to the town code, section 3303, I'm requesting to purchase a fire truck that's within budgeted amounts. We're purchasing a pickup truck that we're replacing, a 1997 Ford that we had received from the utility department. It has long outlived its usefulness for the community. And this is within the cumulative building equipment funds that I did budget for. And according to the town code, I was supposed to notify you last week, which I did. Now it's up to you to decide if it's okay for me to move on or not.
And you're buying it under state quality purchase agreement?
Yes, I am. It has been bid out, correct.
Okay. And this is a Ford Dodge, which is it?
It is a Ford. $29,454.25. And the clerk treasurer has submitted a letter saying that I do have the funds.
Okay. Council comments?
Could you repeat that price, please? Thank you.
Okay, it said 29,000, correct? I thought I heard 49 the first time.
No, it is 29.
Okay. So this is not a brand new one or is it?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
It's, it's a simple Ford truck, four wheel drive. It's not, doesn't have a utility bed similar to what the utility department purchased a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm sorry, are there other council comments? And anything from the public on this? Amber?
It doesn't look like it.
Okay, thank you. So we're back to the council for action.
I will move to let the fire truck, the fire department purchase the truck for approximately $29,000. I don't remember the cents.
I'll second.
Okay. Is the motion a second? Sandy, please.
God Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to privilege of the floor. Anyone in the public having business for the council, not part of the normal published agenda? Russ?
Yes. When you complete your walkthrough of our beautiful 50 acres, I would appreciate you, somebody putting forward a rough sketch of how that land might be utilized as we see it today. I would, I appreciate you not cutting those trees until you absolutely have to. We can always cut an 80 year old tree. It's going to take 80 years old to replace it. But another consideration would be, I realize there's some debate about whether the utilities building should be visible. But maybe we want to keep it closer to the front of the property from an access standpoint. The post office has numerous daily traffic through it, to it and from it. I know that we have an access problem on 46 there, coming off of 46, especially when we add the traffic from the new warehouse west of town. That's going to make a real traffic bottleneck if when you go to the post office, you have to go through that area of 46. So I know we offered the post office a place, but I wonder from a traffic standpoint, if putting the post office on our property is really a smart thing to do. And at one point I did see a rough draft when we, when the town bought that 50 acres, that, that the line coming off of 46 would extend all the way to Matthews Drive up through the woods. I'm not sure how practical that is either. But as we build that property out, we are going to have to come up, I would think, with some better traffic flow.
That's, that's all part of the overall planning process.
I realize that.
So, all right. Thank you, Russ. Dan Ray apparently has a comment.
Yes. My question is simply, is our members of the public allowed to come to that outside work session where you're looking at the park?
Oh, absolutely. And at some point we'll come back to the council chambers presumably to make it a little more friendly for television, whatnot. But yeah, absolutely. Anybody that wants to come is welcome.
Okay. So we'll get notice of exactly when that'll be?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
There will be a Zoom meeting of it?
Um, I don't know. We're doing Zoom meetings for work sessions? I would imagine so, yes. But I, I don't know. We'll have to see what we can physically do that night.
Well, due to my physical limitations, that would be the only way I could participate, but.
Right, right.
I know and I, I, I think it'd be a good idea.
We just have to make sure we get the technology in those chambers to do it.
Okay.
To capture everything appropriately for you. It may have to be audio only, Russ, but we'll figure something out.
Hey, that's fine. I'm easy.
If cats can be mobile and follow us around, that would be perfect.
Well, again, let's try and work on it, guys. I think, I think personally, this, this Zoom works very well for the public to watch their government in function. So maybe if we can try and be more user friendly toward that, that'd be great.
William, I really like your thoughts there. A good cell phone should have good coverage up there. And it would be great then to have a good view because I can look at it on Google Earth, but that's nothing like going through the woods. So I would appreciate it if we would broaden and do, and have a cell phone coverage. And I brought this up earlier and I think Darla's looking at it. The day comes, we're back to normal. I really hope the council and the state law will permit us to allow Zoom access to the meetings as well.
Not sure there is ever going to be a return to zero normal. So I think Zoom may be here to stay, but we'll see what the legislature does.
Hey Darla, Darla, how long are we going on Zoom? Are they extending?
The current governor's, or the last extension from the governor extended the public health emergency through November 1st, I believe. And so Zoom meetings are permitted through November 1st at least.
Okay. My other question, Darla, if we can't figure out the technology for people that are interested, would I be allowed to use my cell phone while we're there to stream it live via Facebook or some other medium?
At first blush, I don't really have a problem with that, but let me think about it.
Please do, yeah.
I guess it doesn't matter how it's recorded, whether it's cats or whatever, but.
Well, my concern is if I use my Facebook page, that, that, that may imply that it's an official page of the town.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't know how to.
Okay.
So.
Well, I'm curious about the legal issue here because you let people make written comments, which are written into the record of an in-person town council meeting. What is the legal difference between doing it and writing and doing it by video live? I've looked through the state laws and I'm no lawyer, but I don't see any real comments or guidance on this new technology because it didn't exist when the, the laws were written.
Well, you're right there, Russ. And we're, sorry, the public access counselor is probably going to weigh in at some point on these things.
Yeah. And from a public access standpoint and the ADA standpoint, I think it should be allowed as a routine part of business.
Can't disagree. I mean, we'll just have to see what the legislature and everybody else lets us do.
Okay. But Darla, even if the legislature doesn't act, does, is it a council prerogative to allow a, a video input into their meetings?
Russ, I would have to take a look at the statute. I think you can, if the council adopts, the town can, the council, town council adopts a policy allowing for that, which is not the same as saying that the council can always meet by Zoom. But I'm just going to have to look at that. I don't, I don't have the statute right in front of me, so.
You said a key thing, Darla. It's two different issues. It's not a question of whether the council always meets by Zoom. It's the availability of input into a council meeting. And if that's the town policy, then I would argue from an A, nothing else, an ADA standpoint, that it should be a part of procedure.
Okay. Well, we, we will deal that as we can. So continue to revisit that.
I sure will. Thank you, friends.
Okay. Is there anyone else with comments under privilege of the floor?
I think that's it.
Okay. Supervisor comments?
I'll start. This is Michael Farmer. So going back to the work session, I was thinking, I, I mean, I thought I understood that they wanted to walk the property and be outside. So to accommodate people that can't be there, I mean, do we want to plan it? So after the outside walk, if you will, would we want to convene a Zoom meeting afterwards? Or I mean, how, how do you want to proceed in planning that?
Well, I guess I have two questions that we'll need to work on before we go down that road. I don't know what capabilities we have inside the council chambers to do a Zoom meeting that lets everybody see everybody. I think we can do audio, but I'm not sure the capability. So one of you guys is going to have to answer that question.
Yeah, I asked cats, I asked cats about, you know, back when we was thinking about having tents outside and having the meetings outside, I asked them about being outside and they're just not equipped. I'll, I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure they're not equipped to do the outside meetings as a live meeting.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, as the town manager, would you mind checking into that and just seeing what we can and can't do? Understanding the council's intent is, at least I think, and the other guys can comment, that we include as many people as possible.
Right, right, right. Yeah. And I also thought, you know, when we was talking about this, if we're going to have an outside meeting or we're going to walk the property and it's possible that it's going to rain, then I'll probably put up one of our tents near the site so that we can be protected as we talk. I mean, because there's nothing like being out there to kind of flesh out what you want to do. And so I, I'll, I'll, I'll just kind of see what we can do and check with cats and see if they can be there outside, even if it's recorded. And, and we'll just have to figure out including everybody that can't be there.
Perfect. Are there other supervisor comments? Marshall?
I'm good. Thank you, sir.
Chief?
I'm good.
Kevin?
I don't have anything.
Danny, do you have anything else?
I have nothing.
Scott, I will, I would mention that Kihei has now taken, taken, um, well, they've moved into, partially moved into their new facility and are utilizing the cold and freezer storage. And they should be moving in completely sometime soon. So I talked to the general manager and any of the board members that would like to walk the property or go inside for a tour. He said, just get ahold of them and he's make it happen. So that's an invitation.
Okay. Good deal. Perfect. Anyone else for supervisor comments? Sandy?
I would like to let everyone know that I have applied for the CARES grant reimbursement and I'm still waiting to hear.
Okay. Do you know when?
I'm not sure when. I mean, I, I did the work last week, completed the last paperwork on Friday. So, you know, I expect at least a few weeks before I hear anything. But I think it's a pretty quick turnaround from what I've heard from other clerks.
Okay. And I apologize, I skipped Dan Ray on their privileges floor. He had another comment.
I have a comment about an incident that happened at my mother's house a couple of weeks ago about the Elsfield Police Department. My mother's 94 years old and she had a, I guess I'll say, an adverse reaction to a medication that caused her to believe very strongly that there was somebody in her house. She thought she saw them. And she called me and it was like six o'clock in the morning and called 911. And I just want to say that, you know, it turned out there was nobody in her house. This was an imaginary thing. And, but the Elsfield Police were there within five minutes. She lives in Forest Park Farm. And they were there within five minutes. Monroe County Sheriff's Department responded also. They were there in five minutes. I was there in five minutes. Everybody treated her so kindly and so compassionately. She was terrified. She was scared to death. Nobody made her feel stupid or old or, you know, like she had, had some kind of mental disability. Everybody, and there were two officers there. Zach Michael was there and I can't remember the other man's name, the other officer's name. But they were absolutely so kind and so efficient and so nice. And, and hung around until she was, they searched the house, searched the premises, till she was convinced that there was nothing wrong. And I just want to commend the, the police department for their response time and for their actions once they got there. And anytime anybody says defund the police, I can't say on the computer what I say. But it's ridiculous. But I do want to commend the Elsfield Department. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. I appreciate your comments. Zach's a good officer, no doubt, but under the circumstances that we're living in today with police officers not being too popular, it sure is nice to hear that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Supervisor comments? I'm sorry, council comments. We're past supervisors.
I actually have some. First of all, Dan, you can always say defend the police. That's, that we can say implied company.
Yes.
But I've gotten up to three emails now over the course of the last couple of days. And I think one of them went out to all of the council members at Chicken Coops. Today I got a phone call from somebody and I drove through the neighborhood and sure enough, it smelled like dog poop all over the neighborhood between Ritter and Dewey on Second Street. And, you know, I guess they asked me the question, what happens if someone just flagrantly violates the ordinance? Well, we can tick at them, but we have nothing to, I mean, can we remove the fowl? If they're not, if they're not keeping clean and the neighbors are smelling it? I've had reports, have their windows open when it's during the day because the smell of feces is so bad. And, you know, obviously the department. And, you know, obviously, the departments that handle this, they're just normal business hours. So, you know, when they're open, you don't know when this is gonna happen. And I'm not saying we should go twenty-four hours with, with that. But I mean, what are some suggestions we could do with this? Because I, I'm concerned we've got some people that are abusing it. One thing that was been suggested to me, can we make this a permit? Where if you wanna have fowl, you have to get a permit and apply from it for it. And if you violate that, just like a liquor license or something like that, it can be revoked.
I think that's a broader question, because we've already got an ordinance in place. So if we wanna change it, we'd probably be better off developing whatever we wanna change it than just simply modifying the current ordinance.
Now, I understand. I just, I just don't know what to do in this situation and what to tell. It, it's a, it's a, it's a neighborhood.
Right, yeah, I saw the email.
Right, okay. And I mean, I don't know what would, I, I, I don't know what their next steps are. I mean, one of them is, is very close to putting their house on the market and moving from Ellisville. And I don't want that to happen.
Well, Kevin, since this would fall under your department, can you guys look at that?
Yeah, and I apologize, I've been out of the office since last week, so I'm not sure if anyone's talked to Denise about this yet or not. So, but we'll definitely look into it and try and figure out what's going on.
Can you let the council just know what's going on?
Yeah, I guess the issue is this person's been talked to multiple times and it's still happening.
Okay. Yeah, and I'll be honest, the, one of the biggest issues we have in code enforcement is we are really limited in what we can do and especially doing anything quickly. And I'm trying to find a way around that. I just don't, I, I just don't know how.
Would a permit or license situation be a little bit different? I mean, it's still not gonna get the speed. They're not really mad at the town as much as they're, they're worried. We really have no force to correct this issue. And I'm not sure we do.
Can I ask, is this possibly the same coop that we, uh, previously granted, um, permission to be oversized?
Yes.
So Kevin, if you could look at it and then kinda get back with us and maybe with some suggestions that you guys feel will make it easier for you to, of course?
Yeah, I'll talk with Denise about it and see what, what we can and cannot do. And hopefully come up something a little more solid.
Yeah, cuz I think even if we did, you know, as William suggested, even a no-cost permit, so we're not, you know, financially impacting anybody, that may be a way to go down the road, I'm not sure. Okay, other council comments?
Hey, I've got something real quick. Hey Danny, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hey Danny, with it being fall and leaves starting to pile up in our residents' yards, do you mind real quick just reminding everybody what the proper procedure is for the leaf pickup?
Yeah, they, we just need, the edge of the road, we don't want them in the road, in their yard. A row like along the edge of their, front of their property. And that's about it, and we will pick them up. We don't, we won't give if they're way back in the yard. They need to be braked out to the edge of their yard, but not in the road.
Excellent, and has that started yet, Danny?
Well, I'm gonna start this week. I, I got, I'm getting leaf loader ready today and I got some things I gotta do tomorrow. But maybe tomorrow evening or Wednesday, we will be out picking up leaves.
Thank you. All right, guys.
Anything else? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So I'm moved.
Second.
Sandy please?
Dan Swaf, or Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
At seven-twenty-four.
Thank you all.
Goodbye, all.